Well, I think you have the best. Nearly all of them very quickly. But it this way it works out. Well, we're gonna go along.
Very good.
Roll on.
Roll on? The October ninth twenty twenty three meeting of the City Council and I'm in order roll call Tyler.
Here.
Ted.
Here.
Esther.
Here.
Ben.
Here.
Devin. Devin, you hear me? Speak up, please. We will open the regular session for the Order of Business. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as printed? So approve.
Second.
Motion for and a second roll call vote Tyler.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Esther. Ben.
Devin.
The agenda has been approved as printed. Deputy Sheriff, would you like to give your report?
Sure. All right, so for the month of September, for deputy initiated activity, there were thirty-two documented business checks, forty-one miscellaneous patrol sessions, here for the council meeting, five bar checks, four school traffic controls, one case follow-up, two park checks, uh, speed or message trailer was deployed in town and then one extra patrol. Then calls for service, we had three disturbances, one dog at large, one welfare check, uh, one mental illness call, one public contact, and one motorist assist.
What's a speed message trailer could do?
So for our traffic unit, we have the the message board that will like flash messages that, you know, drive like there's a cop behind you or whatever, safety messages. We'll deploy that in towns, and we also have a speed trailer that we deploy in towns at times. Um, and it's one of those that will, as you're coming up on it, it will read your speed and then it will flash any if you're going too fast till you slow down, things like that. Just kind of the traffic reminders.
So then that's been requested by the building?
Uh, no, the extra patrol was requested.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm wrong.
Yep, we've, the speed and message boards we rotate around. We just kind of take them everywhere in the county.
So we had one here, I guess, or missed it?
Yeah, it was somewhere in town. We we try to, um, might have been right outside of town as well. We try to get them in every community in the county. So I'm sure you'll see it again.
So how long will you live with it?
Usually about a week, unless it's requested more or less.
It's never been here.
How long have you been in the town?
There's two trailers now.
Okay, this is, we've never had one here.
Well, I'll check if it has been here and that's a mistake, then we'll get it up.
Well, we have cameras.
The message board's been up here before for your town council? All right, well, I'll check on it.
Any other questions for the deputy? Thank you.
All right, you bet.
Please review the minutes of the September eleventh twenty twenty-three meeting of the City Council meeting. And after reviewing the minutes, please indicate if there are any edits to the minutes and then if there are none, the chair will entertain a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
I'd like a motion to approve the September eleventh meeting.
Is there a second? Second? Roll call vote Tyler.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Esther.
Here.
Ben.
Here.
Devin. Minutes of the September eleventh twenty twenty-three meeting have been approved as printed. Please review the financial report for September and after reviewing, please ask any questions. And then after questions, or if there are none, the chair will entertain a motion and a second to approve the financial report. Is there a second? Second? Roll call vote Tyler.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Esther.
Here.
Ben.
Here.
Devin. Financial report for September has been approved as printed. Please review the bills for September. After reviewing, does that mean questions? If there are none, the chair will entertain a motion and a second to approve the bill.
The United States Treasury, without withholding what?
Federal.
What's that for?
Social Security and federal withholding. From paychecks.
For the wages?
Yeah, for one order or something.
Oh, okay, that's what I was.
What is the Visa expense per park fund usually called? Uh, the stamps in the park? I guess I'm a bit curious as to why we went to the expense of printing three colored cards and stamps when we normally put this kind of information in the city newsletter? Why didn't we not just put a flyer in the October city newsletter?
We could have brought in information, we said more people could just run that.
I think we have to be very careful that we use taxpayers' money. We're charged with using it wisely.
Yeah, we're talking about spending taxpayer dollars.
Why couldn't we have included that right in the city newsletter with a flyer? Like we did Liberty.
This goes beyond just Susan Liston. Right, man? Like they were like, you, just your list come.
Is there, is there a motion that, I don't know, very much that the minister approved?
But there is, there is a resolution that we have at just five hundred dollars to spend, so. For Miss Noi, you mean? Is that the first review you've given? No, no. I spend for toner and I buy paper products and Darrel device supplies and.
Darrel is better. What you buy on the track? Builders. Builders.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Is there a second?
Ted.
Roll call vote Tyler.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Esther.
Here.
Ben.
Here.
Those have been approved as printed. Uh, residents' concerns. Uh, as you know, you've got three minutes for residents' concerns and we will not interrupt while you're speaking.
Natalie Burrows, two eight Chilton Street. Just outside above the rocks from now, like, and then, and then, four times, and I keep getting told, yes, you hit them. So whatever, I'm just wondering. If, yeah, whatever.
I was gonna get that address maybe you want?
Okay, thank you.
You have a vote.
I was hoping to, uh.
Please state your name and your address.
Okay, my name's Justin Love, uh, two zero one State Street. I was hoping to address a community candidate for council.
Natalie, what question?
History matter.
Just doing a transition.
My name's Justin Love, as I said, remember I said in two zero one State Street, have been for over ten years. Some things I don't really enjoy about, uh, Liston, uh, are that it's been seeing them touch a lot of changes, which we have seen in a lot of other communities. It is a quiet community to much as I admit. Sorry, a little loud, we're not promoting here. A lot of good people. Liston is my home and my refuge from home crazy going on in the world. I try to be mindful, not impulsive, I mean, one, and if I have an issue, I've always been able to talk to my neighbors and work it out. I've always been eager to limit grievances that my neighbors have drawn to me. Everyone's been great. I try to cope to every situation by first being a perspective from as many different angles as possible. Trying to put myself in other people's shoes. And asking myself how I would feel if I were standing on their side of the issue. Then I ask myself how making change could affect everyone else down the road against every rule as an intended consequence. Most important, I believe, is to remove your own personal biases from any decision that affects a good people. I filled a lot of, uh, the concerns and complaints that I have seen brought before the council could better be addressed as neighbors before bringing the city in subsequently, all those residents into it by forcing orders. I'm asking for the opportunity, the privilege, and responsibility to serve on the council with the intention of being a good neighbor above all else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. My name's Hank Benner, three zero eight State Street. Uh, and I just want to talk just a little bit about the the plant playground equipment. Uh, and you'll catch the flavor of this, but I, I think the, uh, the cost is a little high, okay? I don't begrudge the playground equipment, I think it's a great idea. I think we ought to be looking at, at how we can make our, our community a little bit better. Um, but, uh, maybe we should jump into this, uh, the four feet here. Uh, not the thirty-five thousand dollars is a lot of tax money, because as we know, it's just tax money, it's not government. Uh, but, uh, possibly look at what we're, we're trying to accomplish here. Are we trying to attract more families here? Well, I just finished, uh, going to a school board meeting and they're in the process of consolidating my school district because our children, our, our kid count basically is going down. They're planning over the next five years for it to be low enough not even to be able to use three buildings to go down to. So during that time, we're spending thirty-five thousand dollars, thirty-four thousand, I think it is. Uh, and more playground equipment for more kids when the school is actually planning for fewer kids. Maybe we should target that a little bit better, all right? Uh, let's see, so if we're gonna, if we're gonna do that just a little bit, um, possibly maybe a, a kind of a stage approach, excuse me, I, I had just made a bunch of quick copies of some specific targeted equipment and you guys can take these, you know, look at them however you, however you, uh, you want to do that. But it's a, it's a case where, where maybe we should look instead of, and when I looked at the, at the proposed unit, I thought that was really sharp. Uh, I've got a three-year-old granddaughter and she would fit just really well into that, but quite honestly, are we looking for something for the kids to do to keep the kids out of trouble? Uh, in that particular case, uh, the, those five-year-old vandals, uh, we get very distant. I think we have a five-year-old vandal out of them, all right? And the kids are older, so maybe something that we could target derages a little bit, a little bit better, okay? Uh, possibly the disco courts. Get that started, maybe we can make some improvements out there to the point where, and we see kids out at the basketball court, playing out at the basketball court, and that's, that's a great opportunity for that. Uh, disco, we see some folks out there doing that, although that could be used a little bit more, I think. And, and if we looked at, at possibly making some more plays out there too. Uh, also, if, and once again, on the, on the thirty-five thou, or thirty thousand plus, uh, there might be some other places we can put that, okay? But once again, we have to, we have to look at this kind of realistically. Uh, I, I don't want to say three minutes up. Okay, thanks, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I just want to finish up.
Wait, state your name and address.
Oh, Hannah, I want to go Washington Street. I would just like to continue on with, hey, I would like to know if there were bids on this? Or if we just are looking at one company? I know there are, uh, others, if you only, if you only had one bid. Um, another thing, I would like to know, the playgrounds that were specified, what is the age group for those playgrounds? I know when we put this one up, there were specific ages, four different, um, sections of the playground. So I guess I would like to know, is this for a three to five, or is this for a four to nine, or, you know, there again, what are we targeting if, if we lose all these kids? I would like to know how many kids are in Liston and what ages they are. How many are going to use that equip?
Come up with a book up in the morning.
Yeah. I can't do that on the work.
Come up with a book up in the morning.
If it's, if they're here after four thirty, that's okay.
They're there for them.
But I, I don't know how many kids live in Liston.
Not, it's not just so much kids in Liston, we've got kids coming out of town on the buses, for the buses.
So how do we get money to help build this?
Hey, I.
Are we doing it for the kids that come out of town?
What will happen, because they don't have access to it. I mean, is there, maybe we need to do the fundraising first? Maybe we need to see if these families will help if their kids are using it.
Maybe we are, okay, we'll fill out the third feature. Thank you.
Okay, are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Are there any other residents' concerns? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to pop back in on you. Uh, I was supposed to ask you about, uh, have you guys decided on a trick or treat date in town yet?
Thirty-third.
Yeah.
I've, I've told them that twice.
Have you? Okay. You might have, but it's just that, I'm just.
Yeah, that's very harsh, I'm sorry.
Five percent, five to seven on the thirty-third. Thank you very much, I'll get it.
May I have one, two oh one State Street, just want to address the playground. Because when we moved here ten years ago, we didn't have the funding to give our kids playgrounds at home. You know, for me, young and buying home. We utilize that park, that's what our kids have played on. Uh, we have family that comes to visit, we come up here for a reason in Liston. We come up here, you know, all the time to utilize the park. And I do understand our kids, and there are situations where we're gonna have to do a little harder on stuff than others. But I think it's important that we do consider replacing it, because it's not just for our kids in the community, but it is for the people that come to visit in our surrounding areas, you know? And that helps bring people in here, too. That's just my thought.
Thank you.
Ed Burrows, two oh eight Chilton Street, um, continuing on that. We're, we're trying to bring people into the community. Uh, I remember when I was a kid, before I even moved to this town, my dad would stop by the bar on the way through and there wasn't a park there. And so all I did was chirp in his ear, can we get out of here, because I'm bored? If there was a park here, maybe we would have had here a little bit longer and spent some more money and brought more, you know? Um, I guess the, I, I see the concern to not spend money legitimately in a willing doing, but are there things that, wha- what things would that money be better spent on? What, uh, you're, you're asking for information, um, it's readily available, uh, you just gotta come and see it. Um, the, the events like the tractor days, um, having tons of kids come out, bring, you know, it's just, it, yeah, it sounds like a lot, but it's there, it's available. If the money is a concern, help out with fundraising, um, it, it just, it, uh, I, I think it should be done, so.
Thank you.
That part's been there for a hundred years.
Yes, yeah.
Hi. I'm Vicky Penner, three oh eight State Street. I agree that we need a park. However, not very long ago, we tried to get a skateboard park for older kids, because older kids need something to do in town too. And that was mixed, nobody wanted to spend that money. We also tried to get basketball hoops that come down so younger kids could do that. That was mixed too, nobody wanted to, to pay for it. We do need parks, but we need stuff for older kids too, we need to balance it. If we get equipment that's just for little kids and it, and the big kids have nothing, on the end have nothing. So we need to balance all of it.
I, I'm with you, too, that, I think it's all there.
Yep, yep.
Saying everything, we're just burning around and breaking down this time.
Isn't there not a half-full party?
Yeah.
Don't tell anyone.
Because you're sure.
They're not picking up. They're not as young on that one.
Okay, we're gonna move on with the meeting. I would ask that, um, residents refrain from talking and interrupting during the business portion of the meeting as we have numerous things to discuss. And there will be an opportunity for residents to speak up at the end of the meeting. News and stuff. Hopefully I have news next month. Uh, item number two is, uh, discussion on the playground. I'd like to, uh, discuss four things as related to the playground tonight, four different topics, four different thoughts. And let me start by saying, I'm not opposed to the playground either. I think we need a playground, I think it's critical that we have a playground. And I'm in total agreement that we need a new system. What I'm concerned about regarding the playground is the process that we've gone through, the hurry that we've gone through, and the fact that the council has not discussed numerous things related to the playground. So I'd like to discuss four things tonight, have your input and go through these, and then we'll save the end of the playground discussions for the residents' comments. So number one, I'm curious, like some others have mentioned, why we have not put this out for bids? Uh, when we were discussing the Liston sign out on the corner, you requested that we get three bids. That was a project of about a thousand dollars. This is a project of thirty-four thousand and we haven't even considered any other bids. We got bids from Marshalltown, Nevada, and Ames for the sign up at the corner. So my question is, why have we not gotten bids?
How much money is required every now? The sign thing wasn't a requirement for three bids, but we got three bids.
Well, you request fifty thousand dollars.
How much?
Fifty. You requested three bids for that sign. You brought that up to my attention, that we needed three bids to do that sign. You wanted three different companies involved, so.
Most, the prices on most, uh, playgrounds that are similar to this online, you can really find those prices. Uh, of course, it's, I'm a little bit out of the equation because they're not the same company, but they're generally relatively the same price with the same features. From that perspective, we have looked around a lot, have necessarily gotten them to come out and give a bid, no. But these prices are real, and I have been interested on that.
Have we seen that research? Has that been brought before the council?
No, my point is, like I said, like we have talked about this for almost four months, three months.
Where, what other play, I'm just curious, I'm asking questions.
Well, I know, and I'm just saying.
What other playgrounds?
I am saying that there are other companies out there that these prices aren't available to look at online.
What have, have, what have, what has brought, been brought before the council, other than the one we've seen?
I'm saying, you could, you could have done research in your own time, I'm saying.
There have been, no, there have. I answered your question, there have been none other than, there is lots of companies.
Yes.
Playground boss that looks kind of chinky, um.
Throughout the online.
Landscape structures, I mean, there's lots, there's lots of them.
Yeah. So the general comparison, I would say though, like playground, playground about the same size, is because this is on sale, um, most other playgrounds run four to eight thousand dollars or more for these same sizes.
So, no, I, I just wanted to clarify. So as the, uh, person in charge of the Parks Committee, you have already done the research and brought forward what?
I did not by your own.
By your estimation was the most viable option.
Yes, and there are so many companies out there. I would say your playground looks the best quality, um, but no, I'm not like printing off papers, but I don't totally get this stuff.
Right.
But when they're written on it.
So yes, that's my question.
Yes.
You have, you have done the research previously.
Yes.
And brought what you thought was the, the best option.
Yes, but I'm not one of those, I don't give much money either, but I feel like this is the best option for your price point, and this is with them installing it as well. We could save money if you want to have the whole community come together, piece together. We've done that. I personally don't want.
I don't want.
I don't want to do that, because they know how they're setting it up.
Well, I could, I don't know, someone's gonna need volunteers, but I'm not, you get volunteers?
Sorry.
Can I clarify, is there a point?
That's my question, that's exactly.
So, but just by, just to throw my two cents in the room here, just by going through what, hey, this rock floor, appreciate it, thank you very much. You've been on for about a year. Rock wall, climbing ladder, pretty, uh, metal balance. Is what you got for it? We didn't see anything, but the time, I'll give you my opinion, it's mine. Okay, this is a simple buried ground, rock wall, and no ground, uh, metal, ground mound, accessories alone. So we're happy, no slide, no platform, no long roof. Twenty-five dollars. So, I don't try and make that issue, but.
Generally, these prices don't move installation either.
That's what I'm saying. So my point is, we're getting, having gotten the Liskum already to try it out. To know that what Hank got for it. Now, the flip side of this, we can get a new installers. We put in, turn it around this year. You can turn around, put in, find the wall, and then next year. And the ball here, you, over time, budget, you have to cut your budget, come up, but the end twenty-four thousand, or a part of it. And then you do the lock, lock, and then do the set of action. So if it's in my narrative, it's certain that you can do it over time and process. That's what you got for it. And when you marry around, you were, over there, you could be the first one to play it. And it's all we commit to a future kind of similar feature. And that's what you want, that and you lock, and then roll the whole lot once. It's an option.
I would also like to ask, what do we know about the age appropriateness for this playground? I, I work at Iowa State, the Child Development Laboratory School Playground, it's right outside my window. I see what they have for playground equipment, and I, I'm curious, too, what's the age?
And that's the best part about it, round mound. Round mound, that old pre-loom, whatever, how close it has here. That's thirteen thousand, and that is not an age criteria, if you buy. That would be either less than, over five, thirteen.
Two to thirteen.
Thirteen, so.
And most of our ten-year-olds aren't male, like.
Would be a viable. So that would be viable, often with a holder case, because the place you carry it around the ball, and then for the next year. And we should have that. And we'd be able to hold it here. We're free, so it wouldn't be a time here that it enters. What's that gonna do for one, is when you have a scale of playgrounds, so it's more appropriate for all. A year after year, it's less of an invasion of years. And I agree with you, that's one, for parks. And if that time, if you find a year, you're gonna do it next year. We should try to shoot like a twenty-four to thirty thousand, never mind.
The funds that have been allocated for this is out of the loss funds. And if we pay the full amount, thirty-five, just say thirty-five thousand, that'll be recovered in ten months. We get thirty-five hundred a month coming into that fund. So it won't be, you know, with fundraiser or whatever, it'll take away from that, so it'll be a little less time.
And another thing is, the, the problem of doing it in sections, doing it in parts, things are getting cheaper anytime soon, and we are looking, and part of the reason for the hurry, a little bit of rush is, we're looking at the twenty-eight, thirty week lead times, thirty-five, twenty-eight, thirty-five week lead time, and we were hoping to get that, get this kind of done, so that we're able to see something for a good chunk of next summer.
Good work, please. Okay, I'd like to move on to question two. I'm curious about the name of the playground. Apparently, I missed the meeting where we had a council discussion regarding the name of the playground. I don't recall a discussion, a motion, a second, or a vote on the name that's printed on the postcard or the publicity materials. I don't require, I don't recall us discussing that name at all. I also am curious if we consulted with any members of our local legion to see if that is a name that is appropriate for them. Like, I'm just curious, I'm asking questions, I don't believe we've had a name on this.
So I did bring it up as an idea last month?
You brought it up as an idea, but we did not vote on it.
Okay, well, now this has been finished yet, so.
But you are, you are telling the public, and I'm not, I'm just commenting. I, I'm commenting that.
You're listening on.
You are telling the public that this is the name of it.
No, the host of fundraiser, to work on that, but we haven't agreed that that's the playground thing yet.
But you named it. And people are.
If you had been better conversating last month, maybe we would have talked about it.
If what?
If you had been better conversating last month, maybe we would have talked about it.
Thank you kindly. But we have not voted on this name.
No, we haven't, but that's something that I want to change.
Well.
If we go along with the rights.
It's a little misconstruing to put out a postcard indicating this is the name of the playground when the council hasn't even properly discussed it. That's just my point, I'm just bringing it, bringing it up. Were any veterans consulted on this name? I'm just curious.
We're just trying to respect them that have been here.
Do veterans care about a playground? I'm just asking.
Maybe some do, maybe some don't.
Well, I think, I think that's something we have.
What do you think about that?
Oh, no, don't get me into this.
We don't know, we never got a postcard, so we don't know that it's common.
Yeah, you know, it was, we didn't know long ago. So we're trying to respect what's been here before. And we have a very nice memorial lake program out here. We just thought it would fit with everything that goes on in our whole, our whole celebration in July at Liberty Liskum. That was just a general idea of it. And we're hoping to make it red, white, blue colors, and, um, we used to have a veteran from One O'Lock here, years ago, I saw photos of it when I was, um, doing flight show.
Oh.
Years ago.
Oh.
Yeah.
And you're four hundred.
Yep.
Oh, we had to leave it going.
Yep.
Yeah.
What kind of veteran in the world does he have?
There's been a good sign where it had all the veterans, were one, two, yep. That comes on it.
And then, well, we should talk about the Matt Air and Long House Cemetery. Did their stuff, I don't remember that. Esperness.
There.
Oh, yeah.
All right, there's just one other thing that I would just like to bring up as a question, I'm just asking question. In August, um, I received an email from a council member indicating that they've asked me to put the October twenty-first fundraiser in the city newsletter. I replied back that the council should approve the event before going ahead with it, and it should be on the September agenda for discussion. And the reply was that it's not an official city function, that two individuals were fronting the cost, and there would be no, nothing official with the city. Well, I guess I'm a little concerned when I get a postcard from the city, and I have an email that says that there'll be nothing official with the city, and we just agreed to pay a bill for a postcard. I'm, I'm just curious on all these things, and a little confused. I'm just concerned and curious what other costs were going to be incurring. Then why was I told in this email that there would be no official, any, there would, nothing official with the city? I mean, I, I'm just curious on these things, we.
Was that sent to you then, Walter?
Yeah.
I didn't hear.
I didn't think you.
We don't, we don't, we got one.
Still a little bit.
I didn't hear.
I wonder where they ended up? Is that their names?
Would we have some on the goodness of all of these out?
All right, let's, I just think we have to be a little more careful on what we're spending money on. Concerned me is, we are responsible for taking our money, so. Uh, okay, concern the resident comments.
That me?
Uh, I'll catch you at the end, sir. That, we're having a council meeting.
Oh, you said resident comments, sorry.
We'll have comments at the end of the council meeting.
Yeah.
You tell everybody who's asking. Oh, I'm, we're asking for comments from these sheets. Go ahead, Ben, I'm sure you do. He hasn't read them.
I haven't read all of them. I can handle my finger down. Uh, let's see here.
Why don't you just read them?
Um, yeah, there. Got PAMs here. Uh, what age are the equipment for, we answered that, right? Um, how many children in town use the equipment? I can't give you an exact number, but there are a lot, all summer long, when I was moving home, about four-twenty, there were kids out there. They're, they get used quite a bit. What would be older equipment? That just gets trashed out of the system, right? Put it up for sale. When are you gonna sell that beat-up thing? Uh, what are you gonna sell that beat-up thing?
My proposal would be to move it up with a festival.
Well, what are we? It's pretty beat up already, what we're.
Pretty beat up, but it's not a big issue. But that's the case, we hire and we get volunteers that are relatively refurbished, so that they're the same and usable, for the reason it can't be, he mentioned, and to get there, there's that question to make, that question to be enforced, to start with something with the old playgrounds.
Uh, how much needs to be raised up to the twenty-first? Whatever we can do. Just doing our best, we've sent out letters to some companies and hoping to hear back from some things, and hoping a lot of people show up.
So at the, at the meeting last month, we agreed that the city, we had set aside the full amount to come from the loss fund if there is nothing from the fundraiser.
Okay. Did you get any bids? We're gonna talk about that one, too. Did you need any more information on that PAM, or?
No, I just wanna see apples for apples from different companies. Cause I looked up on the computer, and there's one in Des Moines, one in Marshalltown. I don't know if that's who, Bosland or something? I, Owen, is that who this year comes through?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, there's lots, but they're all over the country. So I don't really know what will be available right from here. But I know I did lots of looking around, I'm trying to get out this apples comparison on those things. I did my best, yes.
Well, if that people want to build playground, they'll have to come, give you a bid.
Well, yeah, I was just saying, maybe they are only in Las Vegas, or, I, I don't know. Like, there's lots of sites online, so.
But that, I know there's one in Des Moines, American Playground.
Yeah, I looked it up on this morning on the computer as well.
So that might, and they have three reps that go all over, so. Might be a thought.
Uh, were there any grants? I looked for grants and couldn't find much this time of year. Um, and really, there really wasn't a lot unless you got to the point where you wanted to install, like, handicap versions. There were a lot of grants for that. Um, a lot of them were pretty inclusive, though, like, they got pretty big on those playgrounds and, like, a lot of ground level things and.
Do we have a grant writer for Liskum? Do we have somebody that writes grants? No. Okay, let's go ahead and get these done.
There. Pretty much the same questions, just came on that one. What age limit? Do you need funds? Yeah. I would like to know how many residents asked me to put in a new perk equipment to be ordered, to represent the residents. What ages are these designed for? We talked about that. How much would the extra insurance be to cover that? Racy? Would it fill up, really, it's part of that?
Not anymore.
The, the issue of how many residents have, have asked for this, it's been a, a common theme at meetings for.
It's been a common theme for the last.
That whenever there's a, a problem with the playground equipment, it's always brought up, that we need something, that we want something, that people's children have nothing to do. We've had parents, grandparents here, expressing, um, extreme disappointment in the park, because grandkids come to town and they have nothing to do, because the park's unable for X, Y, Z reason. So, um, even though we don't have necessarily a hard and vast number of how many, how many people have come, it has definitely been something that has been brought up in residents' concerns, that it was, it was frequent enough that we said, okay, it's about time to do something about it.
In contrast, we have a family reunion here, and we had a lot of kids, and they had a wonderful time playing on the playground. And they, we had all ages, and they all played and came in and said what a good time they had at the playground. So there's two sides to that.
Oh, yeah, my kids, my kids love the playground, too, but that lifespan is pretty well done. All right.
Right, but that was nothing.
Do they need to go play?
No, you should be fine. I'll hold on a while, check, and we'll get something done.
All right, um, the rest of these talk about, not unlike option two, that was a really option two for the climbing, which we had also talked about. Eventually installing some sort of monkey bars over there, which I think would be good for some of the older kids, if you had about thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. I think that they would appreciate something like that in the future. Um, let's see. No one wants this option, option two. Doesn't get to me, no, not now. I'll just give you a gist of my children's, because I just gave them pictures and told them these right questions field. My older couple did it themselves, younger, too. We spelled out what they said, and then they wrote it all down in their notes. My oldest couple just liked that there were more things to climb on, to run on. My oldest is almost twelve now. It's just regardless of how shot it is, and that the slide broken, he doesn't want anybody to get hurt, he's pretty conscious of those things. And then, I think this is it. As mom and dad are taller aged children, I am strongly favored option three, as it gives me space and mood to follow. Assuming that it's, you're supposed to follow. Our two-year-old loves the playground. I find this a great option for those who need help to get out of a particular situation. The variety of new things on this option, I think, will also be able to interest wider individuals as kids play on this all summer. I'm very looking forward to improvements on playground. And that's all I have.
Do you wanna give us an update on the October twenty-first fundraiser?
Uh, we are having pork.
Yes, so.
Oh, no, it's fine, we're doing pork and baked beans and potatoes and chips and water. Um, he will be smoking the meat on his family's trailer smoker, right? And then you've got ribs, that'll be an extra.
So, so what we're, what my plan to do right now is, we're just gonna do, uh, through a little donation, is gonna get you a full pork sandwich, baked beans, uh, chips, and then as a, as an extra side thing, I'm gonna cook a few racks of ribs, not a ton, but those will be an additional thing, just gonna spell ribs for the bucket boy. And, uh, I have, well, none, that's not gonna cost the city anything, that's all.
So my pork donated by JBS.
Yes.
And, uh, we had some gift cards donated by Heidi and Fairway, so we're hoping those will buy quite a bit of the other stuff. And we're hoping to have some desserts, that's still getting worked on. Uh, we will have a few raffle things, that's also getting finished up. Overall, I think it'll be pretty good, yeah.
Sounds like it. Very enough.
Okay.
Okay, what else needs to be decided regarding the playground tonight?
Okay, what else needs to be decided regarding the playground tonight?
Well, we need to decide if we're going to move ahead or not. We set the money aside last month. Fundraising going ahead regardless. Uh, we hope to get a good amount and donate that back to the city. I still personally favor option three as I think that's the best of all solution. Uh, these are twenty-five plus year improvements. The op, amount of money between option three and two, to me, over a twenty-five year span is not significant enough to not go with option three. Um, I don't think we're being ridiculous when it comes to what we're trying to install. None of this stuff is cheap anymore. It's absolutely outrageous. For the quality and, um, the space you're going to get from it. I think that's about the best it's going to get. So. I personally would like to see this installed. And be on our way to next summer having this in. I don't think we've rushed into this. We talked about it four months now, I think. I think four months ago we locked this up for the first time. So, I don't think this is going to be a very rushed thing, personally.
Other comments?
I think the options have been made that were included here and that's what we're complaining about.
As a...
Well...
Non-lethal.
Park, naming the park, all that.
That is nothing official, just working with it.
Okay.
Because you were requesting to do a...
You let the public to think that that was official.
You're requesting requests to do a...
Well, we need to make a motion and we look at it, I guess. I mean, the playground stuff we've been talking about, that's been, uh...
Setting more...
We wanted to vote on it last month, but we held off and let them send in all that information there, so.
So, we're in agreement on option number three?
I'm questioning by option number three. I realize now everybody can be in agreement on these things. Um, I don't think this is a frivolous spend personally. Um, this is a long-term deal. I'm going to be almost sixty by the time this is, like, shot. And that's the way I just look at it, so.
But they're all a long-term deal, all three?
They are. And my point is because it's a long-term deal, this four thousand more dollars or so, five thousand more dollars, isn't a deal breaker to me. We're not talking about spending sixty thousand dollars on playground. I think that would be frivolous for us. I think this is acceptable. I did see a frivolous thing installed somewhere and it's not even as big as you think it is.
Where is it at the...
Probably.
At Conville or at...
At the church. And after seeing it, I would even more so want it because after seeing the space that you would have seen the top bit, it's not even as big as it looks.
It, it's installed now?
It's getting, getting installed.
Now, are we decided on the color? Are we having to...
So, that was something that we didn't finish talking about here. Um, you can choose probably different colors. Uh, we were hoping, Tyler and I were hoping to go with, like, red, white, blue sort of colors. See what's available on what feature of it.
What's Conrad installing?
Colors, uh, like green, yellow or something. It's kind of odd, I don't really like it. It looks solid. It's just, we're trying to go with a bit of a theme here.
We have a motion on the floor.
Yep.
Do you, uh, purchase option number three?
One, one second here. So, we're going to... We, we actually have a, a photo that is being installed right now. And it's not, like I said, it's not even to make an eye on it, but personally, I try to figure out the pictures. That's why I still need more than option two or just talking about the small, like, people helping little kids.
What's that option?
So. And it takes up about the same square space over there, but I think the slides will pop out a little bit further.
So, so what, what's the option of this compared to what we got?
Compared to what we got?
Well, we're betting on one through...
So, that's three.
That's three over there?
That's three. I'm assuming they got the sale, too, and jumped on it. That's my assumption. Why are they selling it right now?
So, the only thing is that we've got...
Option three, they're bigger than that.
What's that?
Option three.
That's what I'm saying. That's why I thought that it's going to be bigger, but I don't think it is. Because I had everything that option three has over there.
Those are not...
I think it is, that's what I'm saying.
Is it maybe more condensed?
What's that?
Space, maybe a little bit more condensed?
On how it looked? I'm not really sure.
They, they had to put the...
They're not completely finished.
Do they have all the slides on yet?
Um...
Like, like it's state, both of those are, all three of the options. One would be really small, so it would still take the same amount of space as this one does. So, just kind of picture the same space, just sticking out in different places.
I think, I think some of the slides are a little bit further. It's just like maybe the basic walking area. I don't think it's like huge, like, about the same as that.
So, the only... The only thing that I have potentially against option three is I'm looking at four of the cards. Let's say two.
You can see that that looks to be option three.
Oh, yes.
Yes, I was looking at it. I'm just saying, like, and there's all sorts of different opinions.
Right, and so, I mean, I...
And one of those that came in came with the water bill and I know that the person, the child is sixteen years old.
Okay.
If you want to take that into, I don't know what you do, but she's not going to be playing on it.
Well, yes, that, that was just one of those things that we said. We, we didn't want to just do this on a straight vote because we didn't want to have just, in this case, four to eight children deciding, making a twenty to thirty-five thousand dollar purchase for the next thirty years, these are things that we wanted to consider. But at the end of the day, I...
Still got more to go, I'm saying, pretty much.
Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor.
Yep.
We do not have a second.
I'm sorry.
Is there any further discussion?
What's the motion?
Motion is purchase number three.
Option three.
I would like to see a red, white, blue one that's going to install somewhere. Can we...
We obviously didn't give you a picture.
Yeah, I imagine if we tell them these colors, they'd probably sense a lot of sort of pressure. Possibility. But as far as, I, I knew we would have a vote for you, but I couldn't tell you exactly. Or I could see it, but like, it very well may be just red and blue, you know, but, you know, but it's...
I would be in favor of red and blue and leave a way out.
Yeah. The white could look very, very quickly.
Yeah.
That's why I kind of talked about the handhold here, maybe you'd have more...
I am, I am opposed to the white.
Put the, put the white on the roof.
And that was one of the things I was going to look into when I was hoping to talk to the guy. So.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion before we vote? Anybody? Any further? Okay.
Yes.
Oh, wait a minute.
You can call him?
No. Go call up Tyler.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Esther, no. Ben, not here. Deb. Okay, motion passed.
Excuse me, I missed the vote.
It's three to one.
Three to one.
That you're going to get.
Yes.
Yes.
So, Ted, Devon, Tyler?
Tyler, no.
No, okay, thank you. Um, how's it, Ben? I just heard that there might be a car show here that are or fundraising.
I think that.
Just curious. And it doesn't matter, it's not a city function. I just wondered if...
I saw a lot of...
There have been any bigger problems about, that's all.
Is there an update on the Sire project? No.
Conrad Library Community Meeting. She figured out she could have the meeting in November and still make her timeline, so. Hopefully in November, there'll be a community meeting to find out the interest in the Conrad Library bringing books, tapes, movies, whatever, over here for people who have a hard time getting to the library in Conrad to use it. She got a grant to do that, so.
Over in the state of...
Is that a law? Well, that's part of the meeting, you know. If they would like them to be dropped off at the house and, you know, we'd open up the building and she could, people could come here and get them because you would just call her, email her. She's good on Facebook and I think there's just that thing still. They have her library board meetings the same night as our council, so.
Better.
It's our story.
New business, consider engagement letter for urban revitalization plan.
Due to, or state legislature, they always change how that's supposed to be run. And, and, um, there's a couple changes. One was put off that deals with, um, this is just the contract for them to do it. Excuse me. Multi-residential is now considered something else. I can't remember what. There had been commercial and then it's multi-residential and now I think it's just residential. Is how the taxes lay out. And then they changed something this last time and I really had no clue what she was talking about. It doesn't really affect us, is what I got, but yet it still has to be in our documents.
So, we have to approve it?
So, we need to approve them to actually help us walk through the process to it.
So, it's not...
Because there has to be, this is our tax abatement.
Is this something that we need to study before we vote on, or is it...
No, this is just their contract from the attorney's office to do this.
So, we don't study this, we just vote on it?
Yeah, you just vote to have them do it. And then this would be the walking, then they would walk us through. Because you have to have a public hearing and you have to have all these attachments and it's way above my knowledge.
So, what's final cost? We don't know yet.
From what I've seen so far, it may be eighteen hundred bucks.
So, this is just...
We need them, we need them to help us walk through this due to the state changing the rules of tax treatment.
So, we need to approve...
We just need to approve having this, having islanders and community do the process. That's what this is. And then they will send this, the, uh...
Do they need to sign up?
No, she just sent it up.
So...
And also, how long out, we can, right now it ends at twenty-eight, I think, is the end date on the plan, so we can extend it out also. Ten year, ten years past the twenty-eighth, so I understood.
So, the law is changing based off of the state Bible regardless?
Right.
So, we, we vote and saying, no, nothing. The law changes the way...
Right. Our tax abatement would not be planned, would not be in alignment with the state code. If we don't, if we don't do this, yeah. It's like one of those things, one, if you're going to keep tax abatement for people to use and keep it proper, then...
Gotcha. It's like for something like the...
That's fifteen thousand. And if it's over fifteen thousand... Right. Then we have that big...
Go on, one, one?
Yes. Yes.
Do we have a motion to have the attorneys assist in the development of the newly stated urban revitalization plan? Motion by Ted, second by Tyler. We'll all call vote Tyler.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Esther, against Ted. Committee reports, done as done. Uh, Giger's not here. We're down, we discussed, uh...
There was a...
Oh, go ahead and put the report on the fire and it's suffered.
Uh, oh. Wasn't as good a turnout as we expected, but I think as far as money-wise, it'd be pretty good. We just, a lot of people wasn't there and when you leave out the boxes and the navices and the mat days, you know, that took a lot of people.
They had weddings.
Yeah, they had weddings, so.
And the guys and the...
That took away a lot of, but there's a lot of people that usually don't, but didn't, you know? So...
I'm sorry. Is it, is it a thought that maybe we can switch that up and change the date? Because, I mean, harvest is all at the same time every year, you know? I think weddings, obviously, are...
It's just always been the first Saturday in October.
I know. I just, I'm...
I've been in it almost fifty years and that's what it's been.
I've been here most of the...
So, I don't know.
I wouldn't say you live here, I'm just...
And it's fire prevention month, right? That's the first Saturday of fire prevention.
Yes, fire prevent, the week and...
I mean, I didn't know, I have the other...
I think we're, we're going to do fine anyway, so. It just wasn't as good as it was a year ago. And then, you know, a year ago was better than it was the year before and the year before that, so you just never know.
I think this year went kind of faster than normal, too. So, I think they just get faster and faster.
I mean, there is a...
So, it just doesn't...
Okay, General, then you tell the rest, right? Andrew, you're working, you're speaking, you're mom. Anything about the past? No.
I apologize.
I heard that.
One thing, hopefully, simply ask a good...
Oh.
If you want to put on the gentleman, just want to fish up the part name?
Yes, I would appreciate that, thank you. Um, we spoke back to General Utilities. Is there anything? Christie. Charlie. No, okay. Ted, San, or Tan, sanitation, give your thirty-five dollar recourse.
Yeah, it's, looks like, uh, twelve thousand gallons per day we use and looks like the average and everything is about the same. And that little thing, so it's a little more public than, other than that, it's the same.
Okay, now, we will open it up for any concerns that were not addressed. Oh, oh, the same, Tyler, sorry.
Well, Sheriff Hart said they put a fire in town and they did. I just...
Okay, now, those of you who would like to make comments, we're open for comments.
Were there any questions that felt weren't answered?
Right. Oh, yeah, Ben said, I bet. Only who dressed that room left. I don't know, I don't even know what he had sitting there, do you?
No. And I was kind of looking at his paperwork over here and it looked like he didn't have anything.
I thought, didn't last month we talked about waiting until we got some rain? I, I'm just, I don't remember for sure. I thought that had been told our mouth, but then I thought we agreed that it probably was going to be over, but I'm not sure what Ben had to say, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Just down the line.
Snowball just, Snowball just brought this up. The culvert at our corner needs fixed.
I was going to mention...
Permanently fixed because it's in bad shape. It's got a hole in it. We put, uh, twenty-one words in it, but that was just, yeah.
I forgot, as I said, it's one of my kids that stepped in.
Yes, it's, it's not good at all. And one other thing I would like to see happen, if you're going to spend thirty-four thousand dollars on this playground equipment, I would like to see a camera put on this building facing the park.
There is.
Only this one, so you can see who's doing the things they shouldn't be. Okay, I need to realize that, sorry. Who jacks that? Who jacks the camera?
Christie does one, we're going to play.
Mr. Luck, you had a comment several times ago.
Yeah, I just was going to bring up, you know, that whether you're in favor of this money on this park, on that equipment, first of all, that's been sitting there probably for way too long conditions. It is, all of the takers for that piece of plywood to pull off and there and a kid to scrape on one of the screws or somebody to fall down. And the city's going to be depending a hell of a lot more than what it's going to cost to replace that equipment than we can get done with.
Well, you want me to hurt the whole thing out now?
Well, you don't mean for the whole thing out now?
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, I mean, as far as that goes, you know, there's a lot of pointed questions asked, a lot of negativity asked, I feel. I've been sitting and watching this whole process for the last four or five meetings and sort of other issues, I just think it's it's kind of, it's too bad. I think it's too bad. I think this process is made a lot harder on this council, um, themselves and what the public, perhaps the public has put on. I just, I just wanted to know that I just don't think that's.
Thanks.
Okay, continue on that, uh, Justin's absolutely right, the stuff over there needs to be fixed, we need to do something. Uh, we have Bus Barn back there, that is probably the oldest building in the, in the city for how many years that we've been trying to do something with, but apparently we decided not to use lost funds for that. Uh, anything else that, uh, that we can, and I almost used to say over, and I'll apologize for that, that we waste tax, I, and I don't mean waste, we spend tax money on, uh, is the tanker all paid for? Is the fire department tanker all paid for? Is it?
It's pretty good.
I, not my question, it's not completely. It's not completely paid, so we had another place we could put our lost funds, correct?
Yes, and we might not be in the lost fund that will pay for that if we decide to.
Absolutely, absolutely, and that's a great place for it, we've talked about that for years. How about the Bus Barn, we paid for that to be torn down and for the lights to get their coverage, and we paid for that.
No.
Okay, so the decision was. No, no, no. The, uh, the decision was that we, we buy a specific set of playground equipment instead of doing that stuff. Okay, those are decisions you guys made, okay, that's, that's great. I don't think a lot of us are arguing the fact that we needed to do something over there, it's to do what? And I personally, and this is just me, I personally don't think that we put enough thought into it. Now, you guys did, apparently. Devon, you put out, you put out some good information, uh, you apparently have thought about that, I don't think the rest of us have. I know from, from personally, and part of that's my fault, I should be watching closer, all right, and I don't get it. But I don't think we put enough thought into that, not, um, if we're going to do something, but what we're going to do. All right? I still think that the, the equipment that we looked at, first of all, it's a lot of money and that, you heard my point about that, and that's fine. You know, we, we decide how we, how we want to spend that, uh, more correctly than you guys do, uh, and we vote you in. But if the equipment that we put over there, is that going to meet our needs? I have the same discussion with the school board. School boards, for, for sight, they're long distances, about the end of their nose, um, and I'm afraid we're doing the same thing, okay? I don't begrudge that, in fact, I look forward to seeing it, quite honestly, all right? We decided to spend it, uh, to make sure it's the best that, that we can possibly make. And I also think that we ought to look ahead at not this being the end, Devon. I think we ought to look at what we can do next. What we can do next. But on top of that, that needs to be balanced with, hey, we got tax money over here, you guys sound like, uh, you just come back from DC, you know? This is, uh, this is tax money, this isn't real money, how can I blow this tax money, all right? And I know that's not what you, what you were thinking, all right? I know you guys, you know, that's not what you were thinking, that's how you come across, all right? So perception is reality, but like I said, I, I don't, we needed to do something, absolutely right, and I'm glad we're doing something. It's not what I would, would have done, but thank goodness you guys decided better, and, and, and we're going to do something, so. So don't think that you guys come across, you know, that, uh, that you're, you're out there pissing on the whole town, Sarah and the sailor talk, sorry about that. But, uh, cuz you're not, cuz you're not, all right? We got together, we aired, we talked about this, uh, and we agreed that something needed to be done, you guys decided to do it, good for you.
Thanks. Okay.
That park has a name. Both parks have names because when we had a pedophile living in town, we had to name our parks. So that has a name already, it's, it's been there for years, I don't think that we should be changing the name of the park.
Yeah, we talked about that several years ago. School park, I think the other one was the school park.
But we had to do that.
This one was a park. A town park. That's where it is.
Yeah.
Now we see that.
My memory.
It was all about that. I have to do this.
You know, here, years, a few years back, I wanted to build a new shed down in town for a town shed to put equipment in, so I would have.
I was during Hank's.
Stack equipment.
Yes.
And I still got to stack equipment, I can't get in there, every time I want something, I got to pull everything out to get to it. But I got going down every time I went to town shed.
But do we want to put it down there and now there's a bike trail?
Yeah. They've got nothing to do with bike trail. Everybody just. That bike trail. Our grandkids work in our. People don't even use it. That's what, yes, there we go.
Is there any on here?
Well, I, I'd like to see this one again, that's where we're getting the challenge.
All right, we'll put the town. All right, is there a motion to, uh, during the meeting? Tyler, Ted. All votes in favor say aye. Opposed, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Anyway, you just. Hardly counting this. Hardly counting this. Here's. Marshall.
I did not, I mean. I, and I think, I think you can do.
Well, because I'm a good idea.
Kind of.
No, but I mean, what they wanted, that's what that was. And then they kind of, you know. Well, it's, they had it up there, and it's, and the cement was expensive. So, you know, I understand, I love.
You're not like a chair.
But they, you know, I'm saying.
And then.
And they just.
Yeah, well, always good.
But that's why I had to. Because we didn't, I didn't have. That's where, that's where the town. Yeah, because if you read his, his. Yep, he's not supposed to be. And, and when, when he first named that, when they first named it, he would have been going, asking him to sit and said, he was trying to.
Exactly.
Well, actually, I didn't say. No. Why, this is. So I see. He, uh, I was telling.
And this is the market.
And the only reason I know that is because. He asked. He ran out, I never. And that was. Well, yeah, because it's not his, he owns the money, and, and his brother owns the place, he's the white man. And then she, his wife's family. She's not supposed to be in the middle of the house, so the other mailbox making out, so nobody knows. It's like, it's like a. You have no idea. So I, I know the reason I, I think, that we never raised. So he wanted to. Those kids were just so.
No, this is.
It wasn't here. So, yeah, I, I don't think they, I don't think they. But on the Fourth of July, like, there's children, we've been standing in line now, we're all, we're, oh, yeah, all the time. Have you had enough time to stay in this? I don't know. But he, they were in line to eat. When he, when he recharged that, he was talking to you about it, and he had a big part in it. It's like John, he's a John, I said, I don't think Chris tracked it, he was on his truck, he wanted to. So he comes in, but he went over to say, he says, and he said, I just told you that if you come over to your house and you have any presents, that's exactly what he said. They're not supposed to have their lights on like that. They're not supposed to keep asking up trickery. Do you know that when I, when they come over, and, and most of the time I go in the mail there, but a lot of the times I just take a feed out of the. They would watch me. So the people that, I, I was leaving, saying, I had to do that, too. They go over, they're translating. So I was leaving, and it's going to be, you know, it's true.
Nobody, it's. So we guys.
You're ever tried someone?
It didn't.
Yeah, it's, it's, there's, there's.
Okay, I don't like that.
But the fact that our parks weren't.
Wait, I missed it. I hope they look at that.
By the way, that's. Because they, they just. They used to stand out on their. Again, after, uh, uh. I was twenty-six hours. When I thought you saw me since I was driving, she was about to.
I tried.
Here, I think.
I thought it was twenty years ago. Well, they had. Bad, I'm not supposed to pay.
I, I guess in that, that somewhere in there that law hasn't. The first, well, I've seen, you know, to have it back there with his chair, with the Easter egg. He said, he can go to his kitchen or whatever, but that one is, is watching Easter egg. But my first, my first meeting was right when they were. And I, I, I didn't see much there, I picked up a few, back up the house. We had just done the whole, her basement, and she come to the front door and, and we, when I mentioned it, and I was like, and she said, I need to sit out. And she stayed back, the neighbor said that you're coming. And I said, my husband said, well, basically, when he gets home, he will, he will help me hold my. And I said, no, I said, he's busy. But I'm like, Donny was, he, Jay had never been out registered, so he moved. So I. I can't remember.
It's trying once.
Yeah. But his brother. What I understand is all. No, that's his wife. Sharon, she runs this one, it's Donny and Sharon, and then Karen's brother, and he's one of them. At one time, we had, remember the old camper that was sitting out there? Yeah, the old camper. And those people, they go back to the garage, when you go back, they did it back in the garage. And first we started calling one night for. But they had five dogs there. I kind of, I think I was small, and he opened up the, the door of that camper. The guy that was living there. It was another time. The whole family, it's a case, they really are. But he's small over there. I just been serving.
Did you go to their door?
No. But, but, we voted for it. Zero. Okay, well, it was about two months later.
Mark pressure. That whole neighborhood, and Carmen's living there, it's gray now, Mr. and Mrs. Martin went there, she was. They write it off, they think it's a town. The one that Alex. Well, it's kind of great, but that was Carmen. And then next to them was Jimmy's house, she told Mark to return him.
Say for example, we put, uh, you know, maybe, uh, to go along with kids having something to do. Uh, you know, maybe put a, put a short priming wall up.
And see, when, when we moved here and she lived in the bar, um, they had. The marriage, I like your.